The June 22nd, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Reverend David Hustletime from the Big Beaver United Methodist Church with us to lead us in the invocation, so please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening Reverend.
And first I want to say, on behalf of the congregation, we want to offer congratulations to the city of Troy for your 60th anniversary birthday celebration. Our church began in 1875, and if you do the math, that's 140 years that we've been in the community, and this coming July, we're celebrating 20 years of worshiping in our sanctuary there on John R.'s. So, we're into celebrations, anniversaries.
Thank you.
I want us to be in a spirit of prayer. Gracious and loving God, we do thank you for our many blessings, for family and friends, for health and strength, and for special moments that make up our life like birthdays and anniversaries. We are grateful for our community of Troy. We pray for those who live, work, and play within our city. For those who are struggling with health, bring healing. For those dealing with stress, anxiety, and depression, bring wholeness. For those who've experienced loss, bring comfort. And speaking of comfort, we pray today for the city of Charleston, South Carolina. May the families that lost loved ones in the church shooting feel your grace, and may the community that was rocked by this act of violence be strengthened. We pray, oh Lord, that you give us courage to stand up against racism, whether it's in Charleston or in Troy, because diversity is found in the city and is to be celebrated. And finally, we ask your blessing on this meeting. May we be respectful to each other and support the leadership of our city. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend for those words this evening. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon. Whoop, I'm sorry, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is on behalf of the city of Troy Employees Casual for Cause Program for the months of January and February 2015. Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will present a check, and I will turn the microphone over to her. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Pam Vanderkirkoff. She is from Cass Community Social Services and the Employees Voted. This is who they picked for January and February to give our $585 to. It's a nonprofit Detroit-based agency that provides programs to help with food, health, housing, and jobs for homeless adults and children. There you go. And if you'd like to say a couple words?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm also a citizen of the city of Troy, and for that reason, I'm very proud that the employees are doing such charitable acts for their ability to wear jeans on Friday. But as a board member for Cass, I am very grateful and thankful to accept this check to continue their good works. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the employees. Next is C2, a service commendation presentation to Curtis Sue, an Athens High graduate, for his 2015 exceptional volunteer service to the Troy community and beyond. And I'd like to meet him at the podium if I could to make a presentation. It's always one of the great things when you're mayor to be able to present commendations to our youth. So, it's a good evening for me.
It's a great evening for me.
So Curtis, on behalf of the city of Troy and the Troy City Council, it's really a privilege for me to present a service commendation to you. And I want to read this commendation because this is really what it's all about for our youth. So whereas Curtis Sue, a 2015 Athens High school graduate, represents the best of America's youth and has been a role model to his peers. And whereas Curtis graduated with, listen to this, a 4.5278 GPA, close to mine. The highest ever at Athens High School. In four years, Curtis successfully completed 17 out of a possible 23 advanced placement classes. Close to me.
Almost.
He was accepted to Harvard University where he will start his college career in the fall. And whereas Curtis not only excelled at his high school academics, he also was active in a number of extracurricular activities, including the National Honor Society, Model UN, Project LEAD, Math Club, Student Advisory Board, competitive swimming, and of course, cross-country. And whereas Curtis is the founder and president of Charity Cross Continents, a group dedicated to helping needy children in Africa and South America. For his first project, they delivered gently-used shoes to children in Africa. After gaining support from other Troy schools by running shoe drives, he coordinated the collection of 1,650 usable pairs of shoes that were boxed and shipped to Tanzania. And whereas Curtis was chosen as a distinguished finalist in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, and we're going to see that in a little bit, this program created in 1995 by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, is designed to emphasize the importance our nation places on service to others and to encourage all young Americans to contribute to their communities. And whereas Curtis has been called a natural leader, and I see that tonight, by his teachers and counselors, providing a model example of service to others, and genuinely cares about lifting those up around him to be their best. So now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council extends special recognition to Curtis Sue for his selfless and tireless service and dedication to so many worthwhile organizations over the years. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all the Troy residents congratulate Curtis Sue for his shining example of how to give back to the community as well as the region and wish continued success in all future endeavors.
Thank you so much.
Signed this 22nd day of June 2015, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations to you Curtis, and thank you for being such a great representative to you.
Thank you so much.
Curtis is going to say a few words, and I asked him to bring up a couple of these other awards that he's gotten, and they're pretty impressive themselves, but Curtis, say a few words.
Thank you so much. Well, first I'd like to thank Mayor Slater and the entire Troy City Council for giving me this opportunity and presenting me with this award. It blows my mind that two and a half years ago, I started this project, and I was hoping that perhaps I could help a few kids who really needed it, and then it developed to this. To be standing here today is such a huge honor. And I did deliver 1,650 pairs of shoes, but to me, that's not what was so important. What was so important was that I was able to communicate and connect with my community so strongly. I don't know if I would have been able to do this in any other city than Troy, because I was able to talk to so many elementary school principals, and I could visit these schools, and I was able to talk to the kids, get them excited into charity at such a young early age. It made me feel like I was making a difference within my community. And not only that, I was able to even talk to older groups, Troy Lions, Troy Rotary, and I was able to talk to them and get them involved in my group. So to me, my project resembles not only helping others, but being able to help others by uniting my community, and that's what I think was the most beautiful thing. So I was presented with the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, which was this bronze medallion, and it's a true honor to be awarded this. I was also awarded the Presidential Volunteer Service Award by Barack Obama, Mr. President Barack Obama, which is of course, a huge honor. And the biggest honor of course, would be to be presented by this by our own Mayor Slater. There's nothing greater than being able to help others. And I received pictures of the shoes that I'd received, that I'd sent, and I look at a lot of these kids, and you see, they're all in their school uniforms. They all look so happy, because they have a pair of used shoes. It blows my mind that here, we think, what pair of shoe am I going to wear today? And over there, they're thinking, will I have a pair of shoes to wear? So if I had an opportunity right now to stand up here, and I'd say, thank you to the city of Troy for giving me an opportunity to help others, and I hope that we can continue to inspire other kids to help. Thank you so much.
Just going to stay at the podium right now, but we have so many kids like Curtis, makes me feel comfortable that we're in good hands in the future. Thanks again Curtis. C3 is American Public Works Association Award Project for the Year Award for the 2014 Troy Roads Rock Project, received by Steve Van Dett, our city engineer, and Kurt Bovenseep, the Public Works Manager. So I would like to call up Chuck Hart, the APWA President, to present a state award, and I believe Mr. Hart will explain the award and how this is our third award for this project. So I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great opportunity and an honor for us to be here on behalf of the Public Works Association. My name is Charles Hart and the president of APWA. It's a tough act to follow what we just heard, but I will say, he touched on an interesting tone, and it's communication and cooperation, and that's what these awards are for. It is for the Troy Roads Rock Program, and this is a state American Public Works Association Award, and it was for that program and intergovernmental cooperation. That really started with the city, their initiative and the use of general funds to fund repairs and rehabilitation of a lot of road commission for Oakland County roads. Through that partnership, and quite a bit of pain last year, the city was able to do just an amazing amount of work on these roadways. And in terms of what that means for the Public Works Association, these awards and the fact that Steve Van Dett put in for it, it's really a model for other communities to see what can be done. A little bit of funding and a lot of teamwork can go a long way. And at the city's level, it included your police department working closely with the road commission signals, your community relations, your IT, the website. I mean, I live on the east side of town. I avoided the city a little bit. I came through a few times, but it was a tremendous project, and the cooperation and communication it took was just second to none. So on behalf of the American Public Works Association, I'd like to give the State Chapter Award to Mr. Steve Van Dett and Mr. Kurt Bovenseep. And I'd like to thank you for having us here. It's a great honor, and you guys deserve these awards. Thank you.
That's a great project that was headed up by City Manager Kishnick, so thank you to Brian and your staff and everyone that's put this together. I've had less complaints this year than last year, so I think that's a good thing. But thank you. Thank you for the award. We appreciate it. Next is C4, an Elite Fleet Award for the city of Troy's Fleet Division. The government fleet honored the four elite fleets in the nation, including the city of Troy. And if I could call up, and I see they're on the way.
I have a few words I'd like to say first, Mayor.
Before my, I read my.
Yep. I wanted to kind of put the stage in place for the mayor and talk a few things on how elite fleets are recognized. And they're recognized for their industry leadership initiatives for fleet improvement. Those include insourcing, grants, streamlining operations, being competitive with the private industry, using best practices, efficiency, and being sustainable. And I wanted to put that in perspective, because I know this is a very important recognition for the city of Troy.
Thank you, Tim. I think when you're one of four in the whole country, I think that speaks for how important this award is. And you know, this prestigious award is given to the number-one fleet winners from the previous years. You can't win this two years in a row, but once you become a winner, as long as you are still meeting the highest standards in the fleet, you are still recognized. So the elite fleets are the best of the best. Some other cities brag that they're the best, but I think Curtis can tell you, elite is better than best. So, and there are only one fleet per year is added to the ranks of the elite fleets. So it is my honor to call up Sam Lamorato and his staff, and I'd like to present this award to them. So on behalf of the City Council and the city of Troy, it's my privilege to present the Government Fleet Leading Fleets Award, which recognizes the city of Troy as the 2015 Elite Fleet, and congratulations again to everyone up there that always makes Troy shine. And we certainly appreciate it from the City Council and the citizens of Troy. So Sam, on behalf of Troy City Council, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of your guys. So congratulations again. I'll have Sam say a few words here. You want to get a picture first of everybody? Yeah. Okay, Sam.
Well, thank you very much Mayor and City Council. It's been a great pleasure again to represent the city of Troy as one of the best fleets. And I truly, truly, from my heart, believe we have the best fleet in the nation. Several years ago, when we started this journey, we were awarded top fleet in the nation, and we were told at the time when we were awarded that we set the bar pretty darn high for other fleets trying to catch us. So with that being said, this isn't an individual award, this is an award of a team you see behind me. The team you see behind me is just the afternoon team. We do have a two-shift operation in Troy, where there are 7:30 in the morning till midnight or 12:30 in the morning. It's five days a week. And with that, I'd just like to do a quick introduction if I could. We have Lauren Miller, he's a technician. Eric Chisholm, a service tech. John Clark, he's new to our fleet. He's only been here for a few months, and I believe he's enjoying himself and really contributing. Brian Varney, who was just promoted from a heavy equipment technician to our new field supervisor. Congratulations, Brian. We have Mason Shalow, he's been with us for about a year now, and he is doing a fantastic job as well. We have, again, we have Brian Gray, right directly behind me, and Greg Norman. With this team, this team will continue to do the best work that we can possibly expect from an individual. They are fantastic. And again, to the city management and the citizens of Troy, we have your backs. We're going to make sure that the yellow trucks are there in case there's a fire, the patrol cars are there in case there's an emergency, the snow plows are there, and the water department's there, as well as all the other equipment that we repair. So thank you again very much, and again, hopefully next year, we'll be here again. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations gentlemen and ladies.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on your promotion too.
Yeah. I mean, hard-working guys, manly men, and they got baby blue shirts.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you for all you do.
I appreciate it. Thanks again. Thanks again.
Take care, Sam.
Good job.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next, C5 is a Trails and Pathways Update with a presentation by Kurt Bovenseep, our Public Works Manager. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, I just want to note that these photos in this presentation are actually real action photos from a trip that we did, and we, some city staff members biked the entire 11-mile trail to get real familiar with it and kind of get it, look at it from the ground level, if you will. If you remember back in 2014, December of 2014, staff brought an initial plan to you for the 11-mile trail. This plan was really generated from the 2009 Trails and Pathways Study completed by Greenway. We took portions of that and looked at how to connect as many community facilities as we can. With that, we understood the ASHTO standard, which is the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials. It's a guideline when you develop trails and pathways for grant opportunities. ASHTO indicated that this would be a low-volume trail, in our opinion, which would require only an eight-foot-wide pathway. However, with discussions with MDOT, the federal government no longer looks at any trail and pathway as a low volume, which would indicate that we would need a 10-foot-wide pathway. With that 10-foot-wide pathway, we need two foot of clear zone on each side. So easements are right-of-way needed, means that we need 14 feet. During our early stages, we recognized that we didn't want this necessarily just to be a city administration project, that we wanted community input. We developed the Trails and Pathway Committee, and with that, there's city staff represented by many different departments and residents and alike. And some of, were in the audience today to show their support for the project. Fred Phillips, who is with the Friends of the Clinton River Trail, who is also a Troy resident, and Tom Crent, who is a Planning Commission member, who was actually part of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board when the 2009 pathway was completed. So again, we wanted their input. This idea of having residents on this committee is also very important, when we go and have a big public forum and invite the public in to show support for the project. We also, in the process of developing partnerships with the different organizations and community members in the city of Troy, Mayor Slater has gone often with us to these different partners to show support of the project. There was a little bit of reluctance in some people, especially SEMCOG. They said, you know, you've been there, you've done this, we did the 2009 plan and nothing happened. Is Troy for real this time? Mayor Slater's been a great support when we go and meet with these partners to commit that the city of Troy, this time, we're going to go through with it. Troy School District was our first partner that we approached. We met with Dr. Macheski. Again, the idea is this is a recreation opportunity, and we wanted to cross as many public facilities as we could, including some private facilities. We've met with Auburn Hills Assistant City Manager Don Greis. We sat down with him and his staff, because part of the importance to this trail and pathway is the connectivity. We're proposing to connect to the Clinton River Trail, which is a regional trail, that is very well for grant applications. Mr. Greis and his staff are very excited to see Troy doing something and looks forward to the opportunity to work with us. We're in continued discussions with Walsh College to utilize a portion of their natural area behind their campus. Again, the idea is to connect to many facilities as we can, and we looked at Walsh College. They have natural area that's not being used. It takes the trail and pathway off the local streets. It gives the residents a different perspective of Troy, if you will, going through these natural areas. Again, we're in continued conversations. We have a meeting this week with their financial board to discuss the opportunity for an easement. We've met with Zion Christian Church, another partner in this process, again, to use a lot of their natural area that's not being used, to keep the trailway off the local roads and touch as many natural areas as we can. We realized a couple months ago that although we were progressing well, we needed to progress a little bit faster, so we looked at hiring a consultant. The city of Troy has three current consultant firms. We asked those three to bring in proposals to the city of Troy to give us their experience and how familiar they are with trails and pathways. HRC was clearly the winner of that. They were the only ones that really took ownership of our project. They went out and took pictures of the trail and pathway, and they related it to other projects that they've worked on. So we have retained HRC to be the consultant. One of their first tasks were to look at the entire trail and pathway as far as which segment should we go for first. If you remember back in December, we separated them in three different segments. Through their recommendation, we are looking at the first segment to apply for a grant opportunity is the section from Adams and South Boulevard to Firefighters Park. This was chosen for a couple reasons. One being that this is what provides the connectivity to the Clinton River Trail, so it's going to score fairly high on our grant application. This area is also the easiest and fastest way where we can get cost estimates. It has the least obstructions or least challenges, if you will. However, it does not come with some challenges. Our challenge here is Firefighters Park. Firefighters Park, the trail and pathway connects through Firefighters Park. However, the first challenge that we looked at is how to cross the lake or the Rouge River. And the first proposal is to go across the Rouge River, as you see there. And again, this is a picture of our bike tour that we did, and this was us crossing the Rouge River without a bridge. HRC is going to be proposing some cost estimates for us here by the end of this week, so we can look at each one of these proposals and make a decision. We'll also have the Trails and Pathways Committee meet out at Firefighters to go over each area so we can decide which is the best to go across. The second proposal within Firefighters- We'll also have the Trails and Pathways Committee meet out at Firefighters to go over each area so we can decide which is the best to go across. The second proposal within Firefighters Park is to go through what I call the land bridge. There is a current bridge there, and then go through behind the houses and connect to that right-of-way out to Coolidge. The challenge here is the bridge width. As I mentioned, ASHTO standards requires 14 feet, and that means we would have to replace this five-foot bridge with a 14-foot bridge. Along with that, because we're traversing around the lake, we have challenges with the grade. We have to make this trail and pathway ADA accessible and meet their standards as well, so we have some slope concerns there. And the third is to use an existing culvert that's already 14 feet wide. It would have to go through the disc golf course, so we'd have to reorganize there. The challenge here is going through some wetlands. Whenever you go through wetlands, it has to be an elevated boardwalk, which can be costly, and if you ever ride a boardwalk, isn't the best terrain to ride a bike or roller blade. So those are our challenges within Firefighters Park, and HRC is up to the task, and through their proposal, they indicated that they can meet our timelines. Our timeline is to submit a grant by August 3, which is the grant application deadline through MDOT. Before that, we'll be coming back to July 20 council meeting with a recommendation to appropriate the funds. MDOT, through the TAP grant process, requires City Council to actually appropriate the funds to know that the match is there. So we'll be coming back July 20 with a bigger presentation and what we've actually chose to go through on Firefighters Park. Again, August 3 is the grant supplemental deadline. Grants aren't awarded until October. That's when we'll find out. And then, once we find out if we are awarded the grant, we can move forward with construction starting as early as next spring. And again, through the entire three-year project, we'll bring back on July 20 a larger-picture timeline that we can follow along with.
Great. Thank you, Kurt. Any questions for Kurt this evening? I always appreciate the updates. It's good to hear what's going on and that we're moving forward, and having the partners, I think, is the most important thing. Make sure we get the funding to support the city funding. So I appreciate the updates, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. C.6 is a Building Department Activity Update. There was a yellow sheet placed on the table this evening. C.6 is not on the original agenda, so we have a presentation by Paul Featherstone from SafeBilt, along with Mark Miller, the Director of Economic Community Development. So good evening, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to speak just for a moment about the rise of building permits and also building permit valuations. Back in 2010, when SafeBilt became a partner with the City of Troy, the rough numbers, 943, as you can see on the graphs we have, permits issued. By the year 2012-2013 fiscal year, we were already at 1,957. We've doubled. And then by 2013-14, again, we went up by a few hundred more. 2014-2015, again, this year, we've gone up a few hundred. We still haven't had our June numbers. We've had an outstanding year this year. But the most exciting thing, which I believe is in the permit valuations, okay? Back again, 2010-2011, we were roughly $81 million a permit valuation. By the 2012-2013, again, we've doubled. We're getting a lot of business in, we're getting a lot of permits issued, and not just a little fill store. We're getting hotels, we're getting hospitals, we're getting remodels of Beaumont, you know, many wonderful projects. Again, 2013-2014, roughly $153 million in valuation. Now, this is a year that's very exciting. Right now, we're already over $200 million in valuation for the year, and we still have our June numbers to come out. We have many projects that are going on right now. We also have, again, many office build-outs, but what I have been noticing is, coming across my desk, is the City of Troy, the citizens, are putting money back into their homes again, and not just, say, buying a new home, moving around. We still have many people moving into the city. We had a builder just today, local builder pick up seven house permits today, ready to go. And this is daily that we're having builders come and pick up one or two houses. Commercial projects outstanding right now. But what I'm seeing crossing my desk is additions, finished basements, garages, in-ground pools, many, many wonderful projects, and that is what I believe is leading to the higher permit valuation this year.
Good news.
Thank you, Paul.
Very good news.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, members of council. I'm happy to be here. So Paul represented what we provide to you in your monthly reports. It's basic information of the number of permits and that valuation. Well, later on your agenda, you have a budget amendment related to SafeBilt. So we thought we wanted to demonstrate in revenues through permit fees and actually the fee for SafeBilt, how that comes out. So in the graph that's shown, you have three categories. The darker blue is shared city and SafeBilt permit revenue. This is permits which are related to the enforcement of the state construction codes. The light blue is city permit and bond revenue. SafeBilt administers approximately 20 other ordinances which are not state construction code-related, which we receive revenues from, and also bonds. And then the green, lime green, is SafeBilt's actual fee that we pay them. The one thing I will note is, in the first fiscal year of the contract, 2010-2011, the split, and the way that we calculated the fee from the shared city and SafeBilt permit revenue, was an 80/20 split. But the contract stated if, whenever we reached $1 million worth of revenue, it would then go to a 75/25, which where we have been since then, obviously, because we're growing the whole time. The building activity consistently exceeds SafeBilt's proprietary economic projections. SafeBilt employs a firm that gives them proprietary information throughout the nation, and they share that with me, and I then have to return it to them. But consistently, they exceed them. Why is that important? Because what happens is, is we don't project the amount of revenues coming in that occur, and also, we don't project the amount of fees that we have to pay. But that's an okay problem, because the way that this contract is written is that we have corresponding revenues whenever we have to pay additional fees to SafeBilt because of the 75/25 split. And finally, I am going to give a quick summary of each fiscal year. We, in 2010-2011, the shared city SafeBilt permit revenue was just over, was over $1 million. And then, over time, the second fiscal year, 1.7 million. Third fiscal year, just over $2 million. Last year, over $2.5 million. And we're at $2.7 million of shared permit revenue, and that does not include June of this year. That is not baked into these numbers at all. Then the city permit and bond revenue started out at $301,000 and slowly increases to $500,000, $650,000, $788,000, and in this current year, actually is reduced, is $686. Paul, do you have any idea why that might have reduced? I've got you on the spot.
That's okay. No, tell you the truth, I think with the June numbers, it's going to be not a big one.
So then, Safe, I'm sorry, SafeBilt's fee initiated the first fiscal year of the contract at just under $1 million. Second fiscal year, 1.2 million. Third fiscal year, 1.7 million. Fourth year, 1.9 million, and currently, 11 months of this current fiscal year, just over $2 million. So since they've initiated the contract, we've seen such an increase of building activity evaluation, their fees have over-doubled in that time period. And I think the important thing that we take from this is that, I think, because our economy was so low when we did this, a lot of people didn't realize how much potential growth there really was. They were just saying it was going to be really flat, because SafeBilt's proprietary projections do include a very, very modest growth, very flattening of that, and I don't know if that's really going to happen, because we have a lot of empty buildings to fill.
Still good news.
Yeah.
Great, good news. Thank you. Any questions for Paul or Mark? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always nice to get good news.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Paul, just to let you know, I get nothing but positive feedback on the permit process in Troy today.
Well, thank you, sir.
So I'm sure that has a little bit to do with this, too. And if I could just reach out to City Manager Kishnik, I think he wants to say something else.
Yeah, well, I want to echo what you just said, that there are so many positives about SafeBilt and the way they function and how they've set the standard. But really, what I wanted to follow up to what you just said about that was, when this city, council, and administration moved to the SafeBilt contract and model, which has become a model across the country, not just the state of Michigan, across the country, because I'm contacted at least, I would say, once, twice a month about how the City of Troy does this, and you know I wasn't here when the City of Troy did this, but this is a model across the country, and it works. And I don't hesitate to say, SafeBilt carries all the risk. The City of Troy carries no risk. So that's a heavy burden for you, but we like it on your shoulders, not ours.
Well, I like it on my shoulders, too, but...
No, you do.
The only way we can do it is the partnership that we have with the city, with Brian and with Mark and the other department heads, with planning, engineering. We work as a team. We are partners. Even though we are the contractor and they are the city employees, you wouldn't know the difference when you're walking around City Hall, from SafeBilt employees versus Troy employees. It's an outstanding partnership, and I'm very honored to be here.
We appreciate it. Having been one of those that voted to privatize the Building Department and hire SafeBilt, it was a very difficult decision for me and others on council, and I'm happy that I can report that it was the fiscally responsible thing to do. It was the best thing to do for Troy, and I feel good about it. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate being here. Thank you.
That concludes the certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening, no public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, so we will move to regular business as there are no postponed items this evening. There are no Board or Committee appointments from the mayor this evening, so I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Protem Campbell for City Council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we do have a few that we have nominated. We'd like to get the resolutions and appointments done tonight, so I'll do this all under one request to authorize the appointments of the following people to the boards and committees. On the Historic District Commission, I'd like to put Timothy McGee's name up. His term would expire 5/15/2018. On the Parks and Recreation Board, it'd be Elizabeth Sifflin, and she would, her term would expire 7/31/2016. On the Personnel Board, we would have Ed Abraham. Her term would expire 4/30/2018. P. Terry Knight would expire their term at 4/30/2018. And Lorraine New, and she would also have her term expire on 4/30/2018. And the last one would be Kathleen Reagan, and she also would be put onto the Traffic Committee, and her term would expire 7/31/2016.
Thank you. Support.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Campbell, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we appoint those that were read into the record by Mayor Protem Campbell and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick to those committees and terms. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to those that volunteered to serve on committees. I, too, is the board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening, so I'll turn the microphone over to Mayor Protem Campbell for City Council appointments. The nominations.
Thank you again, Mayor. Tonight, we have two people we'd like to put forth on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Glenn Clark has requested reappearance to that board, and just because he is up on 4/30/2015. And the second one would be Thomas Desmond, who also has requested to be put onto that position, so I would put both their names forth for voting in our next meeting.
Support. Moved by Mayor Protem Campbell and supported by Councilman Pennington that we nominate for the zoning board of appeals Glenn Clark and Thomas Desmond for the terms that expire Discussion. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Those appointments will be voted on at the next council meeting. There is no closed session request this evening, so we will move to the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed. Second.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Mayor Protem Campbell that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the packet this evening. Discussion. Councilman Gottlieb, did you?
No, I just wondered if that was moved by Councilman Pennington or...
Oh, you're right. It was Councilman Henderson.
We often get mistaken for each other.
Yeah. Did we get that for the record? Okay, thank you. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Can't see what he can hear.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you're here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on Russ Chauveau, Troy resident.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. If you could just speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Russell Chauveau. I've lived on McManus Street here in Troy for over 30 years, and I'm here to talk about the Troy parks. I don't know whether you're aware or not, but there is no concessions in any of our sporting parks. All-in, firefighters, Flynn, they get a ballgame, they can't even get a hot dog or a box of popcorn, anything. So I'm here to suggest putting in a vending machine, at least there's water that they could get out of there. Drinking phones don't even work. So that's all. I just want to, we had a vending machine in there, but Kurt here didn't want it no more. He told me to remove it. So I'm making a suggestion of putting one in, so we're still at our hottest part of the area, coming up to get a water. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll have somebody respond to that after we've listened to the other resident this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I will call on Martha Wells, Troy resident. Good evening.
I'm Martha Wells. I'm a 17-year resident here at Troy, and my concern is the need for comfort shelter at the bus stops. I don't know, I would imagine many of you might have gone through, as I did. You might recall taking a bus before you purchased your first car, so you know what that's like. But today's weather, thunderstorm that took place, say, for instance, between, I think it was around 4:00 or 5:00, it was a perfect backdrop for my concern today, because it was really raining cats and dogs. And so we... And so, we love Troy. It's a city that we brag about. We have good police, library, and all of that, and I agree with that idea, that Troy is a wonderful place to live. I do believe that putting covered shelters with a bench or something at the major stops to start with would be, would show just how concerned we are for those that come into the area to work, as well as those that live here, can get around without wondering, you know, have I got all my bags? Am I going to be safe to run across the street and catch the bus? Or, you know, that type of thing. So, that's my concern, that perhaps we look at especially on, I want to say, it's Maple between Rochester and Crooks, and then on Livinoy between Big Beaver and Maple. Just, that's just the name, too, but there are other places where I think that would be a good idea. And thank you so much.
Thank you. That is all that has signed up to speak this evening from Troy residents or businesses. So, if I could call on the city administration to give us a response about possibly vending machines or some water or whatever's going on at the parks, the recreation parks this evening.
Sure. So, what I do know, Mayor, and city council, is this was, I think Mr. Chauveau was the vendor in these particular areas, as well as the Troy Family Aquatic Center. And so, the city has taken over that at the aquatic center, put out a bid for the others, and we did not get any responses. Then put out an RFP to hope for some more creativity in thought and approach, and received one proposal from Jack Johansson? 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 Johansson, who's also a firefighter here. So, that's being evaluated right now. So, I know Kurt and Mary Beth, the purchasing director, have talked about water, and we'd be happy to get with Mr. Chauveau. I don't think we've ever had a conversation, so we can certainly do that and get back with council on water in the parks. I know I was thirsty Saturday night.
Yes, as was I, but we did have some vendors there that...
Yeah, you're right. So, there wouldn't be vendors here during this time. So, I know they've talked about vending machines.
Right. So, city's working on it.
We will, yes. In fact...
I'm sorry, sir. We'll have somebody from staff talk to you after the meeting this evening, and maybe we can see if we can accomplish that.
I'd be happy to stay after.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on the Parks and Rec? Or, my only comment on the bus stops is that the, I don't know that that's within our power to put shelters at the bus stops that would be mandated, I would assume, by MDOT, but maybe somebody from staff could help me with that.
Well, I think what we want to do is talk to SMART first. It would, you know, and I know we've already had a developed relationship over the last couple of years. This would be another opportunity to talk to the ombudsman, is it Madonna, Ben? Ben Fawcett. And this would be an opportunity for us to contact her and the SMART folks and see if there was something. And then they would have to work with Kurt, because it's all in the right of way, right?
I certainly think it's a good idea. I mean, I drive by there, and I see people standing there when it's raining, when it's snowing, when it's cold. I think it's a good idea. And I thank you for bringing that forward to us. So, it sounds like we'll look into that. Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I guess I wanted to echo your comment. I appreciate you thoughtfully bringing that forward. And just looking down the road and the trends of younger demographic and city trends, you know, it is about walkability, bikeability, taking transit. And when you go into other communities, you do see that, and you see what you're talking about in fits and starts. And it may be an opportunity, as we look at our overall master planning and our various things that we're looking at in terms of Big Beaver, the bike trails, it's all part of a comprehensive view of what does a walkable, pedestrian-friendly community look like. Even pedestrians have to come from somewhere and get across while they walk to maybe their final destination. It could be not only a nice-to-do to protect people from the elements, but if we think about this creatively and forward-thinking, it could be something that, again, helps Troy stand apart and is a look-to piece in the region for how we handle people that live here and come in here. So, it's an opportunity, really, and if we could look at it that way and part of our comprehensive viewing, and I know staff already does that, and that's been part of the talk, but you've just brought it more front of mind, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilwoman Hoderick, did you want to?
Last Wednesday night, when the events happened in Charleston, I happened to be, ironically, at a meeting of a group. I was invited to observe and hear and see what they're doing. And it's a group that started forming a little less than a year ago here in Troy. And they call themselves, they have named themselves, the Troy Area Alliance Against Hate Crimes. It's a wonderful group of people, a very diverse group of people. They're forming, if I can just read this, "For the Purpose of Hate Crime and Hate Bias Prevention Through Education and Also to Offer Support Where Desired to Victims of Such Crimes in the Troy Area." We might think that they don't happen, that these crimes don't happen. We did have, on May 1st, it was in the media, a hate crime, and I'm not going to go into the details of it, but this group has stepped up to offer support to the victim of that crime by encouraging justice and education in the process. And they're just a newly formed group. It seemed timely to share this at the council table and with staff, that such a group exists. It's a caring group. You know, Curtis Sue, speaking earlier about that opportunity to give back to the community, that's what this group wants to do. If anyone is interested in learning more about it, it is newly forming. It has a logo, website to come, social media to come. They're about to work on charters. If you're interested in learning more and maybe participating, please feel free to call or email me. But to use a term that a surviving victim used last week, as she described the Bible study group that was so viciously attacked, she said they were the pretty fullest group of people. And that word struck me. I ended up Googling it. I wondered if at first she misspoke, and sure enough, I'm seeing it as a word. And this group here in Troy, and that sense, you know, the Curtis Sues, that sense of having one another's backs here between staff and members of the community, the openness of dialogue is one of the most pretty fullest things that we observe lately and is, I think, a testament to this community and how it's moving forward. And I appreciate this team that has formed.
Thank you. Councilman Gottlieb?
I was just going to say that if anybody has an opportunity, they might want to consider visiting the Troy Nature Center. We, my wife and I, were there on June 18th, and if you missed it, you missed the Bald Duck Mountain Ramblers. And good time was had by all, but it's a free entertainment, live entertainment evening. If you have small children, what a great place to go. So, I would encourage anybody to, if you have not been there recently, go back and visit. It was awesome. It's part of our birthday party.
Part of our birthday party. It is a jewel. I think Cindy Stewart's going to send us a date coming up where we probably would like to be at the Nature Center for an event. She's going to send that to us. But thanks. Thank you. Any other council comments? I am going to ask to waive the rules of procedure to allow city council to take action on an item that is not included on the printed agenda. So, I will move to waive the rules. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we waive the rules of procedure to allow us to take action on an item not on the agenda. Any discussion on that? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would like to move a resolution to reschedule the regular meeting scheduled for Monday, July 6th, 2015, to Monday, July 13th, 2015, starting at 7:30 PM, and directing city management to publish notice in accordance with the Open Meetings Act provisions. Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we reschedule the meeting for July 6th to the 13th, as indicated. And once, if that is approved, I'll have a discussion. Is there a discussion before that? The reason that I'm asking to do that is that that is the day after the Fourth of July weekend. Staff will be off on Friday, so getting the agenda out would be burdensome to staff, plus those of us that celebrate the Fourth out of the city, it would be difficult to be back. So, that's my reasoning for asking for that, if it's not a burden on anyone else. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Do I need to cancel the 6th? No, that takes care of it. The only other council comment I'd like to make this evening, when the Road Commission put out their road report last time, I criticized them for not including Troy, so I think it's very appropriate that I applaud them. If you go to page 2 in the Oakland County Road Report, the headlines are "The Troy Steps Up for the Second Year to Help Repair Roads." And if you read the article, it talks about how we are a great partner with the Oakland County Road Commission, and I applaud staff for being such a great partner with them. They also talk about the APW Award that Troy won also. So, thanks to the Road Commission for recognizing us and supporting us and being a partner with us. I've done a lot of talking at council comments, but I would be remiss if I didn't speak about a visitor that we had Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday morning. Swami was taught yoga to those that were willing to get up at 6:30 AM. Unfortunately, I didn't make it to the 6:30, but I did make it to the 7:45 tree planting at the community center, because of Swami, every city that he goes into, he wants to plant a tree and a fruit tree. So, we got up Sunday morning, and if you go over to the community center, there's a brand-new red delicious apple tree planted to the east of the flagpoles, and we're going to have a plaque made and dedicated to him for wanting to recognize the city of Troy. I think it was a great honor to have him here, and we appreciate the families that supported him and bringing him here today for this week. So, thanks to him. And City Manager Kishnik, did you want to say anything more? I know you were a strong participant in the yoga.
Well, I think "strong" would be a strong word. I was a consistent participant for four days, my wife and me. But I would just say, Swami is a monk from India, and he practices the ancient yoga of sages from many years ago, and we did have a good turnout from staff, as well as the Hindu community here in Troy. And Sunil and Anil are the two people that supported him coming here, who, you probably know Sunil, he's involved in a lot of things, homeowners association, financial ideas team. And they just did a great service to the community, and it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, meeting and talking to Swami the monk.
That's true. And if there's anything that you want to know about yoga, Brian is an expert on the moon and the sun and their correlation to...
Left and right.
Left and right, yeah. Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I'm sorry, I'm speaking a lot again. I'll be hearing about it from Mayor Pro Tem Campbell. But I just wanted to thank city staff for the amazing birthday party on Saturday. There was a tremendous crowd of people, families, young people. It was fun to watch people having fun together and just a good old-fashioned birthday party at Mullen Park. The park looked beautiful. DPW trucks were out there. Police car was out there, fire engine, the movie night. It was just, well, you can tell a good time when little children are worn out and having meltdowns as they get back into the car at the end of the night when they're leaving an event. You could tell they had run and played, danced to the music, and thank you to everyone that pulled that off. Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart was, I think, the lead person, but I know it's a whole team behind you working, and we could spend another 10 minutes naming them off. But again, I would hear about it from Mayor Pro Tem Campbell. So, just thanks to the whole staff and the team. It was a really wonderful afternoon and evening. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a great event. I think we were all shocked at how many people were there. The parking lot was full all the way to Crooks Road. People were lined up to get into the park. It was a great day. I saw everyone from council was there. So, when that happens, it has to be a good event.
I think Cindy said we had about 3,000 people? It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, I don't know if you could count it, but I know the parking lot was full. You couldn't get another car in there if you wanted to.
And one cow.
One cow? I think we have pictures of you with that cow.
Yeah, I know, but that's a different story.
Okay.
Don't want to go there.
Next is reports. Does anyone on council have any thing they want to say about the reports that were included in the packet this evening? I would just like to bring to the attention the report from the library and ask to... I don't know if Kathy wants to say anything or not, but I think it's a great report. You know, we were chosen as part of a project, and I think it's a credit to our library that we were asked, one of four, or one of three?
Correct. We were one of four Michigan libraries chosen to participate in this project. The project is, there's a library cooperative called MCLS, and it's a cooperative that contains Michigan libraries and Indiana libraries. And they are giving $2,100 in equipment, audiovisual equipment, to encourage collaboration between Michigan libraries and Indiana libraries. So, we're going to work together to learn from them, and they can learn from us. We're going to do joint programming. We're thinking, they're very excited to know more about our teen advisory board. They think that we have a really booming teen advisory board, and so we do, and they want to get something like that going for them. So, the equipment is video conferencing equipment, and what we hope to do with it after the grant program is over, and we've done, we've met our commitments as far as programming, is offer the equipment, use of the equipment to the community, and hopefully also the business community. So, maybe people can come in and do teleconferencing or make use of it for their businesses. So, we're excited to be part of it, and we think it's a great opportunity and hope to share it with the community real soon.
Thanks. Thanks. It was a good report. Thank you. I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on... I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There's no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.